Typically, yeah.
He's got two minutes.
He usually calls the fees.
Something I don't think is. Alright, it's ten o'clock if you could all stand for a bit of the lemons.
Let's do the flag of the United States of America. The United Republic, the Constitution stands on one nation, on a ground, indivisible, and indivisible.
Alright, this will be the agenda, we will start with parks and followed by the state with refuels fund, into X thirteen funds, the capital reserve fund, and until last will be the several funds. So with that said, you've got the floor.
Okay, alright, thank you very much, glad to be here this morning, glad we can do this on a Saturday morning and made it a little bit easier for my schedule, of course. I'll give you an update first and then I'll kind of let you know what we want to look for towards the future.
Okay.
Okay, alright, update right now, uh, parks has had a really good season and the pavilions have been pretty much filled to the capacity that we expected them to be. The parks itself as a whole system, it's in pretty good shape. We have had to deal with things we haven't had to deal with in the past, one of the big things is vandalism. The first time in more than a dozen years that I've been around, we dealt with vandalism this year at the parks. And that is an ongoing concern that the park commission has, and again, something we haven't had to deal with in the past. We've been very fortunate. How we're gonna take care of that, we'll be talking about moving forward, but it is something that we are concerned about and aware of. When we become aware that there's a vandalism that's taking place, we obviously take care of it and report it to the, to the police and to the people here at the, at the township building. But we had cases of vandalism take place over at Tozer's, I'm sorry, not Tozer's Landing, over at East Athens Park, the Jim King Park, where the restrooms were vandalized with spray paint on the building and on the grounds outside of there. We also had a fence that was bent over there recently, we're not quite sure how that happened, but the fence that borders between the properties, the residential properties on the one side and the park on the other side was bent. We can't figure out how that happened, so we're attributing it to some type of vandalism up there. Some of the other ongoing concerns that we have, Tozer's Landing is an ongoing concern that we have and been voiced to the township, the police, and also to us directly. Illicit things that shouldn't be going on, going on over there. We are putting a little bit more of a focus on Tozer's Landing because that is a part that we want to expand and do more with. Obviously, security is something that we now have to factor into that on any improvements that we do make to that park. Again, a couple of things we'll talk about moving forward for this next year that we'd like to do over there. This year, we were able to get a mini grant from the.
Anles Mountains Heritage Region?
Right, Anles Mountains Heritage Region, where we were able to get a mini grant which allowed us to put up a new pavilion over there. That's the first thing that we've done over there in an awful long time. It added a third pavilion, very good experience working with the company that we hired to do it, which was Fifth Mountain out of Western Pennsylvania. We purchased a pavilion package and our friends over at Robinson Contracting and landscaping were able to assemble that for us. That project is done and we'll be resubmit, we'll be submitting our paperwork to get reimbursed for that part of it that was part of that grant, but that project has gone very, very well. Again, also in the process over there, we have identified some things that we're gonna need to do moving forward if we are going to expand that park. I'm gonna jump back if I could for just a second to Jim King Park. Looking forward to this next year over at Jim King Park, I think we're gonna try to make an agreement with the, it's either SAS girls softball or one ball teams there. Everybody knows there's a real lack of practice fields in the area here and they would like to use the field over there as part of a practice. One of the other things that has been talked about is using the field around top as a practice field for them. In exchange for that, I've been told that they do have some funds available and would be willing to put some money into the ball fields.
To upgrade them.
To upgrade those ball fields. If they're willing to do that, I'm willing to sit down and talk with them about how we can make that happen, either at one or the other or both if possible. And obviously, we'll be trying to do that with as little township money as possible, but if they're willing to talk to us and willing to put some skin into the game, we're willing to listen to them on that.
Yeah, just to touch on that, I know that they've had volunteers with equipment, materials, stuff like that. They'll put down new diamond dirt, re-fluff the field out, line it. Over at Valley Playland, that was all donated stuff for the construction of dugouts, the materials and everything else, so could turn into something really nice as far as the field goes if they're able to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely. How this whole thing came about too was that normally there's an agreement between the teams that practice over at East Athens and we usually let those two groups work that out. We had a little hiccup on that early in the season, but they worked that all out and everything and that's when this conversation started to take place.
Yeah, parking is an issue, the in-between time between games.
That is correct.
I wanted to ask you at some point, what's the possibility of being able to, like in the grassy areas, being able to blow that parking lot area out to be able to facilitate a little bit more parking to maybe help mitigate some of that?
On the one side, there's a retention pond for, for water abatement, I should say, in that. So I don't know if we could do anything there, the other way, we might be able to push it a little bit further, but that pushes it further towards the outfield of the baseball and I'm afraid that maybe someone may lose a window or something in that. We will take a look at that though, absolutely. And we've been very fortunate over at East Athens in that it is basically, it's a neighborhood park, so the people and the neighbors of the area over there watch it pretty darn carefully. How the vandalism happened, we're really not sure how that happened.
Probably in the dark thirty, I would imagine.
Yeah, generally speaking, we've been very fortunate. Trying to think, you know, we also take care of the Veterans Memorial here, no real issues there at all. Also take care of the little park down here by the volunteer fire company too, again, no real issues there. Stop me if anybody has any questions at any time. Moving forward to two thousand twenty-six, first thing on my list that always is and has been for the last nine years, a road. I need road work up at the park. To a person, everybody that goes up there says they have a good time at the park, they can't believe that it's a township park and not a state park. It's that well maintained and a lot of that credit goes to Barry, who is our maintenance guy. But the second thing out of their mouth is, I would spend more time there if the road was better. And I think we all kind of know the, the history of the road, it, it's been pushed off for over nine years that I've been around. And we really need a road from the gate up. This patchmail thing, they came through and ground, grounded or grinded it or something and took it down to the dirt and that and that isn't gonna make it. We need to have it from the gate all the way up to the top, doesn't have to go all the way around, just up, up to the top of the hill. And that, the, excuse me for a second, shut this down, why did that happen? I'm sorry. The road in the new phase of the park is really good. The road that goes out to the airfield, or not out to the airfield, but where you take that spur off of Bobcat out there, that looks good too, so we're not too worried about that, maybe some patching in that.
Just the main drag?
The main drag needs to be addressed though, and again, it's the second thing that comes out of people's mouths and the first negative thing that comes out of people's mouth. The pavilions and all that are in good shape. As you know, we have had the bathrooms up at the top redone as far as the roof and the venting and everything there. We had Pavilion Five done last year, we had Pavilion Five done too, which looks really, really well on the roof of that. Pavilion wise, I have a big project that's gonna need done up there around top and that's Pavilion Seven and Eight. That's what we call it, the Rotary Pavilion. If you take a good look at that, it, it needs major work. It's been patched too many times. Barry has replaced the uprights and that, but the roof and the, the structure itself needs a lot of work. We did get a bid for it last year and I don't have a copy of that bid, but there wasn't any money to do anything with it, so we had to, had to just table that. I can get another bid, I, we're gonna need to do something with that Pavilion Seven and Eight, and they are attached. That's why I say seven and eight, because it's kind of hard to separate them, there's a, a little atrium area, area in between them there, but they are attached.
Is that the first two when you come up into the park?
They're connected.
That's correct, I've left the inside. Now, if you take a look at it, go up to the top and come around and look at those, you'll see, the roofs are starting to, to go in, they've got moss on them, we've had some animals up in there that have gotten in there and chewed up things and that, you know, I don't know what kind of animals they are, but they've done that. That's the big project for Round Top that I'm looking at. That along with just routine maintenance of Round Top, which we do as we become aware of things, we, we address that. With regard to, with regard to Jim King, we talked about that already and that was the ball field project at that. Okay, with regard to Tozer's Landing, Tozer's Landing, a couple of things we'd like to do. One, as I said, we do have a security problem over there, we do want to expand that park. I would like to be able to put some lighting up over there, lighting is the biggest deterrent you could have to vandalism and that. I would like to put three, four maybe pole lights up over there. Dawn to dusk type thing, whether they're electric or solar, I don't know, we can figure that all out, but I really think we do need some lighting over there. That'll take care of a lot of the stuff that goes on over there that shouldn't go on. The other thing I want to do over there, and I also want to include Round Top Park and perhaps Jim King Park, although it's not as important in Jim King Park, is that I want to get some cameras. I'm not talking about game cameras where you pull the card out and take a look and see, I'm looking at, at some cameras where it feeds to a site, whether it be the police here or the township building here and it's recorded in that. The cameras are another thing that will stop or at least attempt to control any vandalism that you have. Gives you an avenue for charges.
Absolutely.
It doesn't stop it, because at Athens Borough.
Doesn't.
It doesn't stop it, but you can identify what nitwit is doing it.
Right.
And then go after them.
Absolutely.
We've had some, you know, some we can't find, but there's others that do, and some of the kids, they, they literally, this one girl wrote her name on her vandalism.
Signed your work?
Yep.
Bye.
So when Chief came over there, she's like, yep, I know right who that is, went to school. Because she put her name on it, so it's, yeah, they're not the smartest.
Do we want to start going through the budget more and?
Sure.
Line by line and, and we, I know that you're working on grants, but there seems to be more grants out there for parks and recreation than there is for actually township roads. I would be curious to see what grants you're, you're running after for the parks.
Okay, Bill Steymore, who's our newest member to Parks and Rec, Bill's a retired banker, seems to have an interest in grants and doing grants. I'll be totally honest, I'm not a, I'm not a, a grant person. I help write grants and, you know, the narrative and all that that goes along with grants, I'm good with that, but as far as the system of doing grants is difficult for me. So I'm gonna be relying a lot on Bill to help me out with that. He and I are supposed to get together this next week and talk about some grants for different things.
Would you talk with him?
Yes.
Um, I don't know if he would be able to get it, get everything around to submit for the LSA that doesn't award until next year, but Barry, Barry's had the grasshopper and twice this season for a starter, it was a, it was a pretty big issue the last time that it went out. And he said, he did come to me yesterday and say, to relay, make sure that it was relayed that in the next year, it's gonna probably need to be replaced.
Yeah, that's the.
The grasshopper, the big mower.
Oh, the big, the big machine?
It's the tw- it's a twenty thirteen.
Alright.
Um, he said, and when it's down, whether it be him continuing to do or someone else doing it, but the, the other mower is kind of hard to do.
Yeah, it's like smaller than the grasshopper.
What he needs to do for peak season.
Okay.
And a lot of it, like the grasshopper does it, it helps, like comes down on the weed whacking and all, it's like a lot of less work.
Is that the front, is that the zero turn?
The front, the front deck.
Yeah, oh, the front deck.
But he.
Yeah, the brown one, tan one.
Yep, the brown one. He did grab some, it's been in, I know in, he said in Mansfield they have, Mansfield dealers that have them, but that's the closest that you can get.
Okay.
For service and machines, so just to keep that in mind, I don't know if, if you want to see if Bill can submit for that LSA. I mean, that, it's, it's, it's for next year, so and, and like, you know, it's, yeah, a year out, but it wouldn't hurt to throw in something.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, I, I, I know that, you know, we have had service issues with it and it's been serviced and that, but if he's saying it's reaching end of life.
It is.
I trust him. He's the guy that's on the thing probably five days a week.
Yeah.
In a good, on a, on a, on a decent year.
So if you want his, I, I mean, if, if he can't get, if he doesn't, if he doesn't have time to do before that one, then at least you have that, that's something keep in the back of your mind that has to be, is gonna be coming up.
Okay, the meeting that I'm gonna have.
And they're, they're pretty penny too.
Okay, there's a meeting I'm gonna have with Bill, I'm gonna put the items that we talked about here on the table in front of him as well as, we'll add this, we'll add this thing too, to it. As far as the items that I put on the table, there's not much that, that parks can go after as a grant for the road. That's, that's, that's township overall type of thing, I mean, there isn't any parks grant that I'm aware of or even heard of that would cover a road. Pavilions, security lighting and things like that, yeah, yeah, I can go to and we do plan to visit the supervisor or supervisors, the folks in Towanda about that, okay, the Daryl Millers and the Doug McLinkos and, and the folks down there about that. Also, I had gotten some information from Tina Pickett's office too, with the eye on quote unquote, security for the lighting and cameras, whether that actually happens or not, I don't know.
Me on the sidebar, did you want to ask, Tozer's Landing, have you guys ever discussed a gate? And I know it's, it's to keep honest people, I know anybody can drive around the gate without it being fenced in, but
Right.
maybe that would deter people from driving down in there, like just, like closing Round Top down, have somebody go over and close the gate off there.
Like a dawn to dusk?
Yeah.
Dawn to dusk type thing? We hadn't really talked about it, um, it might have been mentioned at one time and I'm not sure why that was, that was thrown out. Maybe it might have been because of the fishermen.
Yeah.
Could be, could be because of the access to the river for the fishermen.
Yeah, I only ask because I'm sure whatever vandalism is going on, it's at the dark, it's not.
Oh, yeah.
Daylight, kids are going down there to do it, you know what I mean?
I agree with you entirely, you know, in all honesty too, as a footnote, I really believe that our policy of where the park closes at dusk and is open at dawn has helped us out with Round Top, keeping it as nice as it has been able to keep down. And the fact that we have been able to keep down things that happen. And that, I think that, that, that's been a big plus for us, I know it's been talked about over the years, that, you know, open it up twenty-four hours a day, but there's a whole host of issues that come about when you do that. And I know I can speak for the Parks Commission when I say that we're not in favor of that at all. We think we need to have that dawn to dusk.
Yeah, well, that's why I asked about the gate over there.
And we're fortunate too, we do have a good person that does our gate openings and closings and that, so that always works out really well.
Okay, more, let's talk numbers.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay, so, um, on the income side, I left it as the budget was last year. Um, so you'd bring in seventy-one thousand for the, the cable franchises. Off-road vehicle permits, left that at a hundred, this year you had a hundred and fifty-five in permits come through at five dollars a pop, exciting. Interest is, I put that at nineteen twenty, just because I think we'll be a little low in the, in like the January months where we're, we don't have the rental income coming in. And then tower rental.
Is she going too fast for you?
Yeah.
Sorry, okay.
Slow down, please, but.
Alright, um.
That would be helpful, yeah.
Sure, in, so on interest, that's three forty-one, one hundred. Um, so I had nineteen twenty there. Uh, next one down is the three forty-two, four fifty, tower rental fees.
Can I, has that changed, do we know, because we, we have one that left.
Mm-hmm.
And John was looking into what we could, if it could roll into the next. But I don't know what he.
So do I need to, do I trace that one?
Yeah, because Indigo, they were bought by somebody else.
Yeah, but they emptied out the building. They're gone.
Yeah, but weren't some new people coming in, weren't they gonna?
One rolled in and one left.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, Indigo took their, they took their stuff down, because I know they struck the tower and a bunch of stuff and I thought there was work.
Yeah, and they said that they were just gonna release the use of the outbuilding for the townships or whatever, blah, blah, blah.
Is that available now then?
It's, what it's, nothing's changed up there, they just weren't gonna rip down a building.
Yeah, but I'm saying is the, is the, is the building available, there's, there's things on the tower.
There's stuff, there's stuff on it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, there's things on the tower.
There's stuff, there's stuff that it was used for, but basically it was used for, they put it up because they needed it. And then it was piggybacked on, but I don't know about, that's something I get with John, um, then, I don't know what.
Okay, so I mean, highlight that one to see if we need to maybe change that one.
That need, might need to move forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, moving down, I don't have anything in the state grants for the three fifty-four line items. Um, I did highlight this one just now, uh, three fifty-seven, zero, ten. Um, and that is the local, local government or county grant. Um, I'm gonna put the EMHR grant here. I, so the pavilion is up, I do not have a bill yet from Robinson's, do I? I've not seen one.
I didn't get one yet.
Okay, so then we would be able to submit everything to Kane, um, as far as, you know, expenses for the project. I don't know what's other, like, closeout items he would need, but I think it needs to be done before the end of the year.
Yeah, it does.
Um, so that would be the final one, I believe, um, that I'm missing. Uh, so I can put the ten thousand, I'm, maybe that's a conversation with Kane, whether or not we will be receiving that ten thousand dollars for the grant from the, by the end of this year or if it will come in next year, so. Next line item, three sixty-seven, one forty, your pavilion rental fees, um, you're at eighty-five fifty. I think I fat fingered that one, so I kept it at eighty-five fifty, I don't think we'll have much come through for the next couple of weeks before we're done. Um, budget, I left it at the eight thousand. Um, I talked to Meehan about that, if you're gonna increase your pavilion rental rates and we didn't think you were going to do anything at this time, potentially next year, but not this year.
You increased it last year.
We increased it last year, yes, every couple of years we'd like to increase it. If we had, if we had any improvement projects that, that, you know, we justify it a little bit more, I would have a problem, but I don't think we can increase it till next year.
Um, the, okay, three eighty miscellaneous, so this was, I forget what this was that came through, but might have been kind of a pass through, I did put five hundred here, we can budget again for zero instead. It's up to you guys as far as revenue. It's just miscellaneous. Just leave it at zero? Okay. Um, coming down for the contributions and donations, we had a five dollar Round Top Park donation this year. Um, that's three eighty-seven, five forty-two. Um, you did budget for Tozer's Landing donations for this project with the, um, the new pavilion. But we didn't get anything and I don't know if there was really any in-kind stuff maybe that was going to be a match.
There wasn't, there, there wasn't any, um, trying to think, we had a, we had an Eagle project, but that took place up on Round Top, so.
Okay. Okay, so I didn't budget for anything within that section, um, looks like you didn't last year with the exception of the Tozer's Landing one. And next section, three ninety-one, one hundred, I guess there was some scrap metal that was sold this year. So three ninety-one, one oh three, that shows that six seventeen. And so, but for budget purposes, I didn't put anything within that section either.
Yeah, there's no mech, there's no mechanism for that.
Sure.
Scrap metal anymore.
Um.
And the scrap metal was also used to support the veterans, that was what that was for, that was used to support the Veterans Memorial out here.
There's a transfer here and I think that had something to do with that miscellaneous revenue, so I think that was kind of a pass through. Um, in the next section in the three ninety-two, that's under other, um. Okay, so that brings us to the income. And moving down to the expenses. Um, I didn't really budget much in here, um, for four hundred, four seventy, four oh four, three ten, the four oh six, the other general government, um, didn't put anything in here, so there was two thousand dollars budgeted there uh, for Tozer's Landing, I think, I think we're gonna be around that twenty-two, sixty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Um, once we pay Robinson's, because we haven't done that one yet, so I think that was my total, so that's actually, should be zero there, but, um.
So the, the two thousand and four zero six, three one four should be zero?
Uh, well, no, in the H column, that was just from, I, no, it's two sixty-four is what we have paid so far.
Thank you.
Um, that's what that was.
Meehan, are you anticipating that we're gonna need any engineering work for anything, any projects you're doing? That's what it is, it's not, wouldn't it? Uh, engineering work, um.
Or architects or whatever?
Well, I'm trying to think, I know if, if we, if we redo that Pavilion Seven and Eight, there won't be any engineering with that, that's just a rehab of that existing building. I don't know if there's any engineering work that would be required for, if we did a lighting project over at Tozer's Landing and that. I don't know if that requires engineering work or not. And then, you know, the other stuff, the ball field and things like that, that's not, there's no engineering work involved there.
Okay, um.
Is there engineering, if, if we do the road thing, is there engineering, and, and you folks would be the ones that asked about that, is there engineering work involved with the road, is just doing the road?
I mean, it would be.
It's already there.
Yeah, it'd be subbed out.
I don't know if there's any drainage or anything like that.
Um, so next section under wages, um, I predict will be around twenty-one thousand for closeout of the year. And I, my budget, I just kind of took the twenty. Um and I, my budget, I just kinda took the twenty-three, six hundred from the previous year and just. Gave a three percent um increase to that number. Um supplies, we're pretty low here.
Excuse me for just a second, on the, on the, on the wages thing, now Barry's covered under.
But, yeah. He's in this, he's in here.
He's in here, okay.
Yep, so that would be him and that would also include your gate.
My gatekeeper, okay, cause I thought Barry was under.
Keepers, mm-hmm. He, there's some of his wages also comes out of um the general fund for any work that he does at the municipal building.
That's right, okay, that's right, yeah, I didn't, you just reminded me, thank you.
Sure, um so this one, we were low with supplies this year. Um I think you'll get, you'll be around eight hundred by the end of the year and I have a couple more bills from Barry and budgeted a thousand. I increased that slightly, we can stay with a thousand, but I know everything has kind of gone up, so I put fifteen hundred, but. Vehicle fuel is the next line item, the four five four, two thirty-one. Um so I think I have a couple more bills that I have to pull from, the general fund pays those out. And uh so I think we'll be around nine hundred. Um I left it as the budget for fifteen hundred for the following year, not knowing where, you know, what we'll be doing, but. Uh okay, next item, the four five four, three two one, the telephone, so I think we're gonna be right around that four hundred and fifty. It's like a forty dollar bill from Verizon every month. Um I, I don't, I don't know, again, because I was thinking with the security cameras, if you are going to be there, if there's gonna be more internet, you know, required up there. So I kind of increased that slightly for the following year, if you do have cameras, so I bumped that up to six hundred.
Okay.
Um advertising and printing. I don't think, I think you'll actually probably, we don't anticipate any other printing for the year.
I really don't.
So you're probably just gonna be at that three hundred and thirteen dollars, um.
I don't see, uh, I don't see any new, anything.
Do you anticipate printing, I mean, it, the budget was at a thousand, you, sorry.
Bonnie, I have a question. Can we get back up to the cameras for just a minute? What's the total concept of operations with that?
The total concept?
Mm-hmm.
Uh the concept is to put one, maybe two cameras at Tozer's Landing. Uh one, maybe two cameras at uh Round Top, perhaps three. Uh they would be at the entrances to the respective parks and then one maybe up on top. We'd have to do a site survey, have somebody that actually does security camera work. Um take a look at it and recommendations.
So, is your, is your thought that it's just recording what's happening and someone goes back and look at the recording, or is it live somewhere?
It would be li- it would be live with, with probably a thirty-day backup type thing.
And now who's monitoring that?
My suggestion would be the police or, yeah, like the.
The police is where we would have it, you know, I think depending on the system, you can, you can have it monitored at different sites. So the police could have it on, could have it come here, um the way it is anymore with it, you could have it come to my phone too. So if just something happens after, after hours or something like that, or if you just want to take a look at it.
So I, I don't. I don't see this as a, i- is this grant money that we're hoping to get to do all this? Cause it, I mean, we're already at.
I have it in the budget here, we go further down, but.
Fifteen police officers. And I don't understand why they can't patrol out there, because what I hear, that's, just let me finish.
Well. Yeah, sure.
What, what I hear is. We, we need infrastructure for the cameras if they're gonna be fed out somewhere else, so that means we're gonna have to have some kind of internet wifi up there. Okay, then we're gonna have to have somebody watch it, then we're gonna have to have somebody respond to it. So we already have fifteen police officers and we also work with Sarah Burrow in Athensboro. It seems like there could be some synergy to have actual live patrols at these places. Versus an infrastructure that's gonna, we're gonna have to keep on giving to it over the foreseeable future to keep it maintained. So I, I don't mean to be a naysayer, but I, you know, we need to prioritize roadwork. And this to me seems like a nice threat.
The one, the one thing with this though is, this is not taxpayer's money.
That's, that's what I just asked, are we, are, but, but we don't, how do you parse that out with police viewing it? And then responding to something, how do you parse it out? It's, I think there needs to be a cost benefit analysis. On what this looks like five years from now with the equipment maintenance.
Right, and I think that's what we will need to work with, is, is do the research, get, get what it takes to do this and um basically it's a business case.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be somebody twenty-four hours a day looking at screens like Las Vegas.
See, the thing you run into too.
So, it's, you're not gonna have a dedicated person watching cameras like they watch gambling.
Uh so, so this is a budget, Meade, that's just, we, we, we have concerns documented and uh called out.
Yeah.
Let's just keep going through.
Sure, I'm more than happy to talk to you about it, some of the point, we can talk later.
Maybe.
Yeah, absolutely, okay.
Okay, so for advertising, I just left it with the thousand dollars that you budgeted for, um again, this year. Looks like years past you have been kind of around there, at least you spent more money on printing than you did this year. Um the next line item, the, there's for the insurance. I just made a note here to myself that I need to transfer the seven thousand, um to go back to the general fund to pay for insurance. Um I left it the same as far as next year. Um we could slightly increase that, I don't know that it's necessary based off of, you know, the other insurance that come out of the other funds. Um so utilities is the next one, uh so I think we do need to increase that. Um we're already over budget here and uh this is like, yes, the electric. Um so I, and which I, we know is going up, so instead of two thousand that was budgeted last year, I increased that to three thousand. I think we're gonna fall right around twenty-seven fifty the, for the end of the year. The other utilities here, five, or four five four, three six six, uh water, so Tozer's Landing, um this is the second year in a row there's been a leak. Hopefully that doesn't happen again, but that was a substantial increase to, like, I forget what, was about a thousand dollars, I think, just because of the leak.
Yeah, we had a leak out there, that, that's been fixed.
Yeah. So.
Good now.
Yes, I know it has been fixed, so, I don't know.
But can I, just, just before you move on to the next one? So this, and I got it documented, to talk about is the leaks at Tozer's. So it was two years in a row and it seemed to be around the same time, if I'm not mistaken. So I think we need to really either have that checked. Um I, I don't know what's going on there, but this is a concern that we need to follow up with.
I know the one, I know the one was, was, there was a large wet area and they identified it. And it was a pipe leak, the other first one, I'm not sure how that or what that was about.
Yeah, so, I, I have that documented that we need to watch that. I have it set up, I have it set up on the, um, through Aqua on- online for, cause it's supposed to send it like a notification of excessive use.
If it spikes, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But it didn't, it didn't do that, so I, I had set that up that way to try to prevent the tease that happened again, but it didn't do.
So you'd be alerted, yeah.
So then, if, if that didn't catch it, then we need to get with them to say.
Yeah, if you could reconfirm that, but reconfirm that with them, if that's.
Yeah. Uh but it's two times and around the same time, so, okay, enough said with that, go ahead, Mary.
Uh so I put this years at fifteen hundred, we can certainly reduce that. Um as just, unfortunately, the last two years it's been something, so it's up to you guys. Um garbage, and I know we just got, and I had given that to you, Megan, the uh Northern Tier Solid Waste, there's, I think there's an increase.
Yeah. Yeah, there's an increase.
Um. I don't, I, we sh- we'll either fall around the twenty-seven fifty that I have budgeted for this, or I put in three thousand that I think we're going to end at this year. But I don't know if we get, if we pay for the dumpster in December, I think it's gone by then.
Mm-hmm.
So I think twenty-seven fifty is probably about where we're going to fall. Um but I will check the rates with Northern Tier, just to verify, um that that's kind of where we should be. Um next, what do they have? Um we did the scout projects, you budgeted for um fifteen hundred. Just left that in there again, basically the same for all of these, under the maintenance and repairs. We have the Veterans Memorial Park listed for two hundred dollars, we didn't use anything this year. Um and then there's the Round Top Park Star, left that at the hundred, again, we didn't really have anything. So the, the one I have highlighted here, the four fifty-four, three seventy, the maintenance and repair and other, um. I think we should fall around fifty-two hundred by the end of the year. You had budgeted thirty thousand and I didn't know why this had increased as much, but we didn't really use a lot this year. It looks like last year you were around twenty-one thousand. Um but I don't know if this is increased, so maybe this is the line item where we're looking at purchasing a new mower?
Well, if we're gonna do the, if, again, we gotta do the seven, it's, pavilion seven and eight's gonna need work.
Or you. Right, and do you, you don't remember what the, like, what the.
The original bid was last, when we got it, it was refused, it was eighteen, you know it's gonna be more.
Sure. Right.
Uh because he was buying, he wa- the reason we had submitted that originally was that he was gonna buy it at last year's prices and hold on to the.
Sure.
Material until we needed it the next year, but that couldn't happen, but that pavilion will need to be done, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah.
That, that would be considered maintenance, I guess.
Okay. So I can leave that at the thirty thousand for next year?
I'd like to.
Is that for a new pavilion?
No, it's just a rehab, the, the old, that's that huge pavilion up there, the uh seven and eight, the rotary one up, as you make the turn going up. Not gonna use all thirty there, but like I said, it was eighteen, I believe, was the original estimate on that. Or bid.
Okay, so I'll leave that there. Um dues and memberships, you budgeted a hundred, we didn't use anything this year, I think it might be something that's like every other year.
That was, um, had to be a member of the, unless it's not necessarily agreed that you have to be a member to apply for the grants.
Was it? Oh, heritage, yeah. Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I put two fifty in there, if you want me to just leave a hundred, I don't care. Okay, um in here, the capital purchase, which is four fifty-four, seven hundred. Um you did budget forty-five thousand last year and that was, I didn't know what, when talking to Meade, he said that was for the camera system, so.
Yeah, that never happened last year.
Which obviously didn't happen.
Never did, ever.
And so I put in, you know, anticipating an increase, so I, I bumped that up to fifty thousand, but I don't know that.
Excuse me a second, Ronnie, how many acres is Round Top Park?
It's over six hundred.
But what's the, you're talking a hole?
The hole.
Yeah, no, I'm just talking up on the top where people pick, what is that, three acres?
Oh gosh, I, I don't think, I don't know, it's gotta be at least three.
I don't know.
At least, yeah. But, but just not a top two, we've got a, uh.
Well, you got the, I, I understand. Down by the. The areas there, you got the area down on the ball field and you've got. Phase two or whatever it was, the, the most, the newest part there, so there's.
Right. There's gotta be, would it be?
Kind of synergies in from one to the other, you know, at this point.
Fifty acres would be way too high, right?
What's that?
I would, I would think fifty acres would be way too high, maybe twenty-five.
Yeah.
Buying everything.
That, that's probably still being generous, but uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um so I put that there, um the next item down here is four fifty-four, seven oh four, Tozer's Landing. So that pavilion we got from Fifth Room, uh was sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. And then the EMHR grant covers ten thousand, it was um the mini grant series, so. And so that's where you saw it up at the top, I just have to know if we're gonna see that money by the end of this year or if it will be in twenty-six. Um just moving down, there's four eighty-one, one hundred. Um this is just the matching social security and Medicare for the wages for the, um for Barry and the um gatekeepers. So I just left those, at those numbers. Um employee benefits, reimbursements, I, we haven't spent anything yet, I don't know if that's, or how that works, but uh left the two hundred dollars in there. Um there was uh four ninety-two, ten, transferred to the general fund. Um it's gonna be the twelve ninety-eight, fifty-two, I think that was part of like, um just some of the supplies and things that came out of the general fund. And just getting reimbursed there. Uh and then four ninety-two, oh seventy, is transferred to Act Thirteen Fund, so I think. Parks at one point had borrowed some money from the Act Thirteen account, um hasn't yet to pay that back, the thirty-five thousand there. Um left that there for next year, if they're able to start, you know, paying that back. Um I.
That, that hasn't been transferred over yet?
No, so I, I, and I don't, like with Ruth, I think she just kinda put like a fund balance forward, so if you go back up to the top, um if they're. Under income, it's gonna be that line, and it's three ninety-nine, fund balance forward. So like I, I would traditionally like, okay, my bank balance, you know, is gonna be this at the end of the year. And then I would apply that for like the next year, um just so you can see where we are. I know there will be more than seventy-five thousand in that account, but, so I think safe, to be safe, play it safe, we can leave it at the seventy-five thousand. As far as what you'll have at the end of the year.
That thirty-five is still into seventy-five?
The thirty-five, if you wanted to come out, so basically our total income here is showing um a hundred and eighty-one thousand. Um for budget purposes and then our total expenses, which again is now including the fifty thousand for the cameras. Um we, I mean, if we are, well, the thirty thousand within the, the supplies and maintenance and if that would cover the roof. Or, but again, I think we need to figure out where the mower would be coming out of.
Mm-hmm.
Um which I think what, is gonna be like fifteen thousand, is that, do you have any idea?
That's probably.
Yeah, yeah.
I would.
They're high, uh.
I would think so, yeah.
The zero turns fifteen, sixteen.
Yeah, there, yeah, so I think, so.
Yeah, I mean, well, mine, it was.
One of those mowers is probably closer to thirty thousand.
Okay, so.
Yeah, like I said, uh, just a sixteen zero turn is, is sixteen thousand dollars.
One that, is, the one he was, that was about twenty.
Twenty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Also, they're that, you know, yeah.
So then I think down here at the ben- or at the bottom, again with those expenses that we did put in here. And this does show the thirty-five thousand coming out, uh it does, it's expense-wise, it's a hundred and sixty-two thousand, so you'd have a, a balance forward of eighteen thousand in the parks. And that's not completely true, cause there is still more money in that account, but um, but that would be paying back Act Thirteen. As of now.
That would be paying back that thirty-five.
Yeah, yeah, that would be paying that back, it would be doing the camera project.
We've rolled that thirty-five for.
Every time.
I'd like to see it rolled over to the next, next year, cause I, you know, I don't know with expenses and that, we're gonna have that, the pavilion and if I can.
And, and. Right.
We can get some grant money for the other stuff, that's great.
What, what was the thirty-five thousand borrowed for?
I think it was probably, I, something along the lines as far as like a match for um the, one of their DCNR grants that they received.
For.
That's been a while.
It's been a long time, it's been, all I can ever see is shown in the budgets, like it just keeps going and they have.
That was. Ten. No, I don't think it's been ten years. No, but it's been several, it's been several years, it was going back to when Dick was here. Yeah, you know.
But we don't know what it was for, I mean, a match doesn't say what.
We don't know.
I know it's documentation, I don't have it on, uh, yeah, it's been a while, but I know that there was some documentation.
I don't, I don't. It was a long time ago.
Okay, so I don't know if there's anything else on this one. Next one, so you wanted to do state liquid fuels. Okay, so moving on to state liquid fuels. Okay, uh at the top, um your interest is line three forty-one. Um. Uh you didn't have anything in the budget last year, I put nine thousand this year, we should end at eighty-five hundred. Neither of your accounts are really accruing anything up until now. Um of course you had a lot more money in the account than you do, or you will in twenty twenty-six, but that might be a little high. Um the th- line item, three five five point oh two, uh state road, or the state motor grant, so this is, um. That's the number that they gave us for the budget, is that three eleven, three sixty for next year. And then that turn back is the next line item and that stays, pretty much stays the same, so that ten thirty-two, ten thousand, three. pretty much stays the same, so that ten thirty-two, ten thousand, three hundred and twenty comes in from that. Um, Ulster, oh, I guess I need to change that, but, six thirty-eight point two, was this year's. Uh, so I left the budget again for six hundred, they give a portion of their liquid fuels for a small piece of roads that's shared, so. Um, this last year, so I did try to explain this to Garrett too, um, you had definitely been saving money in the or building up your liquid fuels over a couple of years, so that's how you were able to do several of the road projects out of liquid fuels. Um, I think that sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and two, under the fund balance forward, that's kinda where I'm predicting the account will land by the end of the year, because that was paying out for the, not the Aaron Road project, what was the other one, Suit Coat did? That one, yeah, 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 so, uh, so you don't have a huge balance coming into this year, so I do, this is where I think we're gonna be limited, or you'll be limited on um, what roads, projects can come out of this, out of the liquid fuels. Um, moving on to the expenses, uh, this, um, three, or four thirty, seven forty, major equipment purchases. I predicted twenty-five thousand, I don't know that I paid for those, those blades, I think that, that was cert, that we just approved at the last meeting, so I said it'll be around twenty-five thousand at the year end, um, I left forty thousand in for next year, which is what, I, we, this is one that we did originally, we went back and changed the, this line item to allocate more funds for something else, so, um, I, I left it at forty thousand for next year. Um, this one, next line item down, the four thirty-two, one hundred, the snow removal labor, um, it's a little higher than what was budgeted for last year, or at twenty-nine thousand, um, so I put in thirty thousand here, as far as budgeting purposes go. Um. The next one down is the Bulk Road Salt, so it's four thirty-two, two oh three, um, I know Garrett was trying to like, look at maybe a, a small difference here, but I recall state liquid fuels, you can only, it can only go to seventy-five thousand, I can't exceed, or you just leave it there, if anything exceeds that number, then you would pull that out of your general funds. Um. Okay, where are we? Uh, so that would include there, um, so next line items, four thirty-seven, uh, which is the equipment repairs. Um, and the four thirty-seven, one hundred is the labor, and so budget purposes is twenty-seven thousand, and I think you're gonna be closer to thirty-five thousand this year. And so that was, I think, when Ruth had done these line items, she basically just took, um, the mechanic's wages and split it between, um, liquid fuels and general funds, but when the guys are doing their timesheets, some of them are helping and working on equipment, so I think it's just easier to budget a little bit more um, on those, it, within the, this line item, the four thirty-seven, one hundred. Um, so I bumped that up to forty-four thousand, so when I did my personnel budget, I think it was right at three hundred and twenty-one thousand that we'd want to have between general fund and liquid fuels, is for the labor. Um, so I split that between these, and so that just, that's where it came as far as increasing that, I did also include there's about like a twenty-five, a little over twenty-five thousand for overtime wages, and typically we would see that in the winter months too, with the snow plowing, cause that's usually generally when um, they're working overtime, so, uh, there's that on the forty-four thousand. Uh, the next one down is for, for, four thirty-seven, two hundred, equipment repairs and parts, um, oh, that needs to change. So I should probably be about fifteen thousand that will come out of there for, by the year end. What did we budget, and I think this one, so you budgeted, look, I gotta go back up, I'm sorry. Oh, I did have that right, okay, so. I don't know, so that twenty-five thousand may be a lot higher than, um, what actually comes out, you're, right now, you're only at, a little over nine thousand. Um, but I did put that as a buffer, um, you budgeted forty thousand, so to, I just kept that the same? Okay. Uh, the next one, the forty, or four three eight um, is the highway maintenance, so this is another piece of where the labor comes from for public works. Uh, I predict, um, that four three eight, one hundred, the highway maintenance labor, I think you're gonna be under, you've had, you haven't had the employees, you know, you haven't been fully staffed, so I think that's about where you'll, you'll come in on the liquid fuel side of things, and again, I just put the a hundred and seventy thousand in here, um, which is what you budgeted last year, um. And, and I think that still will be able to cover all of your expenses between the general fund once we get there, and, okay. There was four three eight, two oh one, the bridge maintenance, I don't remember exactly what ju, this was for, I know there, um, engineering, it's like there's ninety-two hundred came out of that one, it wasn't budgeted for, and I'm trying to remember what it was.
Part of the repairs to.
That's what I'm thinking, yep, that's kind of what I was thinking, so, that's where you'll see there on that line item, I didn't budget anything moving forward, I know kind of relied on the Act thirteen, and I think with the new projects coming up, it would just be smarter to keep everything in within those funds too, so. Um, uh, four three nine, two hundred, this one, I didn't put anything, so this is again, that was, um, Suit Coat, that project, that three hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and one, um, and I think there's some materials that also came out of that as well, um, but that was that line item, and I didn't budget anything out of here, because so, and there's not a whole lot of money in this account, like I said, like, right now, it's showing with the, that sixty-seven thousand from, you know, moving forward, and then what you'll a, get allocated with liquid fuels, you're basically, like, that's where we fall at this point.
Is this what cost us for here in town?
Yes.
That's real.
Well, it was like, it, it wasn't the full amount, that's also materials, so there was a bunch of materials that were, was that the Johnson Corey's, it might be Johnson Corey's, I'm thinking of that, so that was like eighty thousand, I think, with Johnson Corey's, that we moved from that major, major equipment down to this one.
Yeah, it's a transfer.
So.
It was like twenty thousand, something like that?
It was a hundred and ten grand.
Yeah, that was quite a bit, yep.
Which job were we talking about?
It was, that number is a combination of the cost of the stuff that got done in town here, plus.
You're talking Hillcrest?
Yeah, yeah, plus, we reallocated some funds for another fifty-five hundred tons of road material, cause we ran out of what we had ordered initially. So we ordered another fifty-five hundred tons, so that's where, that's part of that money too.
Did that product go towards Hillcrest and Westbrook and all that, is what you're saying?
No, it, that was.
To different things?
Yeah, it was for, it was dirt road.
But it's included in that three eighteen?
Yeah, it got reallocated.
Right, right, cause I don't remember what, yes.
So do we know what we paid for Westbrook, Hillcrest, all those, for to Suit Coat?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember, but, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I know I have that, but, I don't remember what the bid, it was whatever the, it was actually less than the bid.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Two hundred and something, but, yeah. Okay, so that's basically where we're at with liquid fuels, so like, we really don't have a huge, ob, you know, huge wiggle room there, so, um.
Cause before we go, I just, why is this, why is our labor so high for repairs coming out of here?
Okay, so if I go to the general, let me pull up general.
I mean, we, we budgeted twenty-seven thousand, so far we're.
So I think again, because she took just the mechanic's wages and between general and, um, liquid fuels, so she just put, what his salary would be at the end of the year, and cut that up. But, as you go through their timesheets, numerous guys work on equipment, and especially when you're using liquid fuel funds to pay for their labor, you have to pull that from the line items that they're actually working out of, so I put like ten percent, you know, here, this, this person will do ten percent, they'll be working on equipment as well as the mechanic, because just to, it, it's still gonna be the same, you know, it's like, if they weren't working on the equipment, or they're working on the roads, it's one or the other, so it, it really is a wash, but I just think that you needed to allocate some more funds towards the equipment.
So, a lot of, who's her mechanic?
Oh, Zach.
So a lot of his, what he's being paid is coming out of here again?
That part as well as the general fund, so I'm pulling that up now, here on the general side.
Yeah, it's not, it's like when we had to have a, come in about twenty-five an hour.
So. When we.
Well, no, I understand that.
Right, so like, on the general fund, so all that was allocated here was ten thousand, six hundred and nine, so like, basically she was pulling the wages from that one.
And that's where, that's right, and that's where we should be taking is all liquid fuel, okay.
And then, so. Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that that was there, um, all good?
Yeah.
Okay, what, when did we say, Act thirteen?
Act thirteen funds.
Okay. Okay, so, top, um, I think we should fall for the interest, we'll have twenty-five thousand this year, um. Hmm, budget, we should be able to get forty thousand next year out of the interest, and Act thirteen, this is three five five oh nine oh, this is again, up to you, you've never actually included anything in the budget as far as you anticipating getting any Act thirteen funds, I can put that at zero, but, um, I just was kinda low ballparking that at two hundred thousand, and if you look over the prior years, uh, you know, it's up to you, if you want me to just zero that out, like, you're not going to get anything, or leave that in there. Oh, leave it for now?
Leave it for now.
Leave it now, it's been going down steadily over here.
Okay. Okay. The next one, um, three nine two oh oh one, that nineteen thousand, that was part of the grant for the, um, camera system for um, the police, so that was just coming, it came into the general fund and just transferred into liquid fuels, or, I'm sorry, Act thirteen. Uh, next, the three ninety-two, oh forty-five, the transfer from Parks Fund, that's that thirty-five thousand if Parks pays it back, so. Shows there, uh, and then it does show this transfer number, the three ninety-two transferred received, this is basically when we swapped our, into our new account. Um, it shows a transfer from the one bank account to the next, so, just that there, uh. The three ninety-five, one hundred, I, this is for reimbursement, I highlighted this one, um, I know there's an email, Megan and I need to sit down and go through this with PennDOT. So, over here on the twenty twenty-six budget, that's the three hundred and thirty-six thousand, that was the more bridge repairs that was paid. And I know it's been in the PennDOT system for reimbursement, I just don't know when that's coming, or we anticipate that money coming in. So, we need to sit down, yeah, and, and, yep.
We have to figure out how to set it up and all those things.
Right. Um, so whether or not I put that at the end of this year, or leave it in for next year, we'll, we'll just have to follow up with PennDOT on that. Um, your fund balance forward, uh, I guess that will depend on the reimbursement for, with PennDOT, I would basically just, as of right now, I threw in five hundred thousand. Um, uh, you know, if you, the three hundred and thirty-six comes in, we can include that on the same line item.
Real quick, before going further, just, I understand as far as your budget goes, me, I, you don't wanna spend every last penny, but it's basically where we're at with roads.
Uh-huh.
Not saying the Round Top Park Road shouldn't get done, definitely it would be nice to have it done, but we've got a lot of other stuff to tackle too.
Oh, yeah, I.
Instead of kicking the can down the road for so long with that thirty-five grand, maybe we should talk at some point about, see third party, what somebody could do possibly to dress that up with that money.
With that thirty-five?
To pay back towards the township, you know what I mean, instead of just keep kicking it down the road further, and then we can kinda essentially get the money back, but also get that taken care of without coming out of the regular road money.
Oh, I, you know, hey, I probably understand your, your budget problems and that, you know, like I said, but it's been kicked down the road for nine or ten years, so quite honestly, it kinda falls on deaf ears at some point in time, it really does, and, but I think your idea is, you know, I'm willing to sit down with anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that probably just makes sense, yeah.
I sit down with you, and you know.
You know what I mean, so that way they're, I mean, the money that they're gonna pay back to the loan to us can go into that road and without taking it out of the regular fund.
It's, then it's finally, yeah. Mm-hmm. Correct.
Yeah.
Then the money's paid back, that's taken care of.
If somebody's got an idea, you know, I mean, I know road work is expensive, so I don't know what, what little bit thirty-five can do, but, okay, I'm willing to talk.
Yeah. We'll have to get together, then we'll see.
Okay.
Sure.
We can get hold of that stuff, I'm always willing to talk, you know.
Okay, um, expense side of things here, uh, first section, there's nothing that I have in here, uh. I don't know, um, see, there's one that was fun, there's a line item for a lawn mower in here, but I don't know if that stays with Parks or whatever. Um, but I didn't put anything out of here, I hadn't heard from anybody, I know I asked Roger if there were any things, or, you know, pieces of equipment they were thinking about next year. He didn't really have anything, um, so, kind of left it there.
There is one line of midyear that we really need to consider, and that is the township parking lot.
Yes, yes you do, yes you do, do we have any idea on costs for that?
Well, no, but that's, that's just something we need to really, yeah.
So I should kinda highlight that one.
You do that or turn your fees when somebody turns their ankle out there.
All right, this is bad, um, let me just put a note in here as for, um, parking lot. Okay, um, do you wanna, uh, does anybody wanna have, or get an estimate for that, or? Do you want me to?
Why are you looking at me?
No, I'm not, I'm not, but no one's looking at me.
I can see, I can see if like Stanley would wanna come down.
Are you looking at both sides?
Yes.
Okay, all right, uh, so if we.
Yeah, I get, could, I mean.
Yeah, it's rough over there, I'm not saying.
And that would be right up to, to, you wanna take shop, Hurley's office.
Yeah.
Cause that's all ours.
Okay.
I mean, if we have a meeting, people end up parking up there anyway, so.
Okay. Um. The next section, under the police public safety, uh, you will see that eighteen thousand, five hundred and forty-six, that was part of the, the in-car cameras system that police got this year, um, through the grant with the PCCD, so you'll see that, just kinda pass through, through Act thirteen funds, um.
Lauren, is that kinda standard practice for, like, we fund whatever the grant is, and then you get a reversal, kinda like what they had you want to?
Correct, yep, that's why I wanted to show on the park side, as far as revenue, like, that ten thousand dollars coming back into our, we know we're going to be getting that from EMHR, I just don't know if it's gonna happen by this year, or if, yeah, so, yep, and I think so at the top of this one, uh. Yeah, you'll see that transfer from the general fund, that nineteen thousand at the top there, that was because of that grant, so, that was what was reimbursed, correct?
Yeah, Lauren, I think they're, for that Parks grant, I think they're looking to close that out now, and I'll reach out, I can reach out, assuming Robinson too.
Like I said, the only one, I don't have Robinson's invoice for the pavilion, but.
Yeah, I'll look into that, I'll look into that first thing, and if I go over the weekend here, I'll come look into that a little bit.
All right. Okay, um.
Give that for you. Cause they're finished with that project now, so I'm assuming the invoices already been, are about to be cut.
I would assume, yeah, by this, yeah, hopefully by next week.
Yeah.
Cause that's our meeting, um. Uh, four eleven, I didn't have anything for fire protection or public safety.
We need to put something together.
Um. And then the next one, on the four fourteen, three ten, the zoning planning, the professional, uh, you did budget thirty-two thousand last year. It, to update the, was it your comprehensive plan, or just the zoning ordinances?
Yes.
All right, well, I put forty thousand.
I mean, comprehensive plan, we are, we're probably due.
Sure.
But that's a ten year.
And you should also get a MAP grant for that, like, the municipal assistance program grant.
Well, we, we got spoiled, because we used the county before.
I don't know if they have the capacity to do that now.
I don't think so, we lost, county lost a good planner.
Yeah. I know, a lot of them.
Yeah. So.
I think you're getting a consultant for that.
We were very fortunate, but these guys don't come cheap, so I mean, that is something that we really need to look into, some of this, we probably, if, we are gonna get those done.
So I don't know if that thirty-two thousand, if that was an estimate from last year, I think that, that number kind of had been budgeted for several years, um, and I, I because I had done some grants with that municipal assistance program, and then, oh, like, it went through the roof as far as any of my planning projects, like, they almost doubled in comparison from the years before, like, by the time it got done, so I did put forty thousand in, I don't know. I don't know.
Is that for somebody outside to come in and go through all of our building stuff?
Yep.
Well, not just, but the comprehensive plan, you know, it, there's, it's about this, we have.
I think, well. It's ridiculous, yeah.
Is it that thick or not, but, um. We, it, it should be done every ten years.
Yeah.
I think we're about the only ones in the county that does it.
Yeah.
Um.
That's actually consistent by getting it done here.
But it kind of gives us. I wanna say it kind of gives us a look into the future, but, um. I don't know, we can leave it at forty if we need it desperately for something else, we can transfer it, I suppose, but.
Right, well, I think you were, I, I thought it was like with the zoning ordinances too, if I recall talking to Eddie.
Well, we're doing that all in-house.
Okay. Well, I'll just leave that here as like an earmark.
And I think, be honest with you, that was probably our mistake.
Okay, so I'll leave that as an earmark, so it was there, something else you need. Um, this one. If you go down to four thirty-three thirteen, the highway engineering services at this, um, who, what's, uh, Larson, that's that twenty-five thousand. Um. I guess it's gonna end up at twenty, whatever, the twenty-four thousand, that was for the Moore Road Bridge. Um. Down here, four thirty-two, two hundred, you also have some, some funds in here that you've. You've budgeted for, for snow or ice removal if necessary, if you get one of those lovely years, um. So there was eleven thousand five hundred, I, we haven't used anything yet this year. Um, I put in twelve thousand five hundred for next year in case we have monsoons after monsoons, I, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I kind of feel that way, I feel like that's coming. Um, uh, as under four thirty-eight two hundred, the highway maintenance. Um, I, I said we're going to spend this, but I don't, did we spend it? I don't think we had, this is that four thirty-eight two oh six, the road repair and patching, you do have seven thousand that you budgeted for. I know Matt, you and I were talking about something. That we, you, if you needed to, I don't remember what it was for though.
It was probably for the cold patch.
Okay, so if necessary, we can pull more from here, I, we haven't spent any money yet, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
So typically they'll, will buy and store like X amount of tons of cold patch, so that way you know when it's done.
Mm-hmm. Sure. Yep. And I know there's co, there is funding in the general as well, but, um.
Yeah.
It's just that extra buffer. Uh, I put in nine thousand for next year. I don't know if you wanna leave it at seven thousand, or it looks like if you go back a couple of years ago, you're around eighty-two, so I would just, okay.
Yeah, it's gone. Yeah, nine, nine thousand would be good enough if we need that.
Okay, so then coming down to four thirty-nine, the highway rebuilding, um. Uh, the fourth three nine two hundred. So that one eighty-seven three ninety-nine, which I have not, I didn't cut the check yet for Bishop's. So that includes what their, um, bid price was for Aaron Road, and then there was twenty-eight thousand. Also for prior to that, so that's where you should fall by the end of the year, um, and you did budget the three hundred and seven thousand for Aaron Road. Um. So there's a little bit of savings there, but, um, kind of not really with your bridge that came through as well, um. Next one I kind of highlighted here, four three nine seven oh two, the Miller Road Bridge, so there was that emergency repair for sixteen five hundred. Uh, I think Vermilia Contracting did that. The budget shows the two hundred and eighty thousand five hundred, and that reflected the match for the tip program that was going to be required. Now that you're going to be doing the two pr, um, bridge projects that are grouped.
That they're grouped.
You're, the match is waived for, um. For the municipal side, so PennDOT is fully taking away, you probably need to have a buffer.
Mm-hmm.
But if it's not something that's going to be. Done next year. I don't, like, I know it sounded like it was kind of years down the road, but I, so.
Yeah, but how do you plan for it?
I know they started, they started.
So if you want me to put something in here for now, we can, as far as, um. You know, what you'll maybe be doing is, is that going to be more engineering next year, I don't really know what the next step, or is it already engineered?
What's that for those?
Those two projects, I mean.
The way I, the way I read that was we have, we're.
We're down, yeah, you shouldn't have to pay, but I don't know if you will have, uh, so you don't have to budget anything for it, cause you're basically gonna be the pass through.
We're coming with that, I mean.
It may come out of liquid fuels and then you get reimbursed through PennDOT.
Yeah.
Right.
So. You don't have to put anything in this if you don't want to, um, and just kind of leave it as.
Where did the match come out of for what was done on Moore Road?
So that. That's right here, so that four three nine seven oh five, I highlighted that one as well, so that's the three hundred and thirty-six. Thousand and fifty thousand was only budgeted for that, I don't really know.
Okay, so they.
So we kind of like some of that savings from the Aaron Road, I mean, it's not going to cover all of that. But I did highlight that just because this should be reimbursed, and so back up to the top on the income side of things. I have here under that reimbursement, that's that three hundred and thirty-six.
Okay, that's all I got, cause they said it's supposed to be reimbursed.
It, I just don't know when it's, so like Megan and I need to sit down and go through the PennDOT emails, um.
Do you have any recommendation then for a budget for four thirty-nine seven oh two? Just something to put in there.
I, I, so again, you're, the, you guys aren't really, uh, you're gonna be the pass through, like the bills are gonna be coming from you, like PennDOT's not gonna pay the contractors directly. So money's gonna be coming from, but you get reimbursed, so it's up to you if you wanna show anything or just. I mean, if you want. What did you have?
For budgetary purposes or being able to track it, is it wise to put something in there or just pull it out of?
I mean, you can always still, i- if, I, I think it's smart to. Whatever was, that work was done, apply it to that line item, even if you didn't have a budget for it, but just so it's kind of clear and it kind of triggers your, or to remember like next year, hey, we wanna put some money in that. Just so it's there as a buffer, I don't know if you want, and we could put fifty thousand, I also left the fifty thousand here on the Moore Road Bridge.
Yeah.
So it's up to you, if you. If you want me to put anything in that one as well. But that two hundred and eighty was that match that was with the tip, so. It's up to you. Just leave it as is for now. Cause there is, there is the Murray Creek Road Bridge, there's fifty thousand budgeted there, is there anything else that was gonna be done with that one? So I can re, I can zero that one out and then put that in the Miller Road.
Yeah, that's right, since Miller Road's on.
Okay.
The Murray Creek Road Bridge, which, which one, which one?
I don't know, I don't know your bridge.
PennDOT just replaced one.
Right, and I don't know.
Is that the fifty?
Why, it was budgeted for last year, you didn't spend any money out of that? I don't know. So I, if I put, take that out of here, and then we'll put the fifty in the Miller Road Bridge just as a buffer.
Yes, that's a.
The other one, well, that's, but that's on the wrong top of where the Conservation District one.
Yeah.
And that's a, yeah, that's the Culver, this is, this is bridge, so.
That's the one.
Right. I'm wondering if that's the one.
Here's the difference, that's the one that they just did.
They just did that.
They just did the, the Murray Creek Road Bridge in August.
Yeah, that's, that didn't come, that didn't come up as, um. A project through them until this year.
Right.
It wasn't anything that, I think it was in here like for budgeting purposes for like.
Yeah, so I was probably saying to real people that to that, just so we.
That's, that makes sense to me, cause there's actually work being done, I didn't, I don't know why there was ever.
Really that, that's something that it wasn't.
Well, that's like the fifty that was budgeted for Moore Road, that's how we ended up.
It's set into this year that it's gonna be covered.
Yep.
We were able to pull the funds out of that to do the replace, or the, yeah, repair of the building.
Mm-hmm. Um, and then the one thing you will see on this, on the four ninety-two, um, oh nine, the transfer to act thirteen account, so that was just that. When we swapped over to a new bank account, we took that money, you see it as an income, you see it as an expense and. Hopefully you can just keep the bank accounts as they are next year and not make nine hundred new accounts and close accounts and.
Four ninety-two oh nine?
Um, yeah, four ninety-two oh nine, so you see that one point three?
Yeah.
So when we closed out the, um, CNN account and swapped over to First Citizens, that was that there. So that is act thirteen, and you wanna go on to capital reserve?
Your show.
Ah, so fun, so fun. Um, okay, up here at the top, the three forty-one interest project, you'll be at twenty-three hundred at the year end. I, I guess I probably oughta just put nothing here as far as your interest for next year, I don't know what we're doing in capital reserve. Next year.
I just love hearing interests, that's a.
We have some.
Yeah. Uh, it's freaking awesome.
Um, so the, this year you put it in a hundred and ninety-five thousand, um, into the capital reserve for the various vehicles and so forth that you were purchasing. Um, so. Fund balance forward, she had twenty-one, uh, so that seventy-three thousand I think is right where you're gonna end up as far as what's in that account, it might be a little bit more, but, um. This is the discussion of what is coming out of there this year. Uh, the one line item you'll see here, four ten seven oh two, the police vehicle is the fifty-seven thousand, so you had. Budgeted at sixty-five thousand, and then again, there's the four ten seven oh one, so I don't know why I did that, but I did that. Um, the eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty-two is the outfitting of that vehicle. And this one, it should be fifty-two thousand for the vehicle. They had, they reimbursed us the five thousand, but there's no way to show that, so it basically covers the sixty-five thousand that was budgeted for, um. Uh, I highlighted your zoning vehicle, um, understanding the, what is, LSA grant be announced next week potentially?
Yeah, I'll get it asked.
So I highlighted that.
Well, no Thursday.
Okay, um, we'll see, so I guess we'll be able to say, I mean, we put that in here, I guess. Or, I don't know, I don't know how you wanna do that. I would just probably zero that out and put that in the general fund in that way.
I, I hate that that's so lagged, I wish.
Oh, it's awful, it's awful, and the timing that they announce it.
You have a mandate to put it in for and just generate.
It, the, the announcing that they, you know, cause you're doing budget, you're already kind of like trying to figure out what's going on and. And another round is open, so you can't even prepare an application.
Yeah.
They should, ugh, whatever, not mine.
I think the problem is they have so many.
Yep. Uh, next one, four three oh seven oh one, that was another truck that the Public Works purchased, you budgeted sixty-five, so came under a little bit there. And that's it, that as far as this year, I didn't, like I said, I, the only thing I put in here was the zoning vehicle and that's kind of dependent on the, the LSA grant. And I don't know, I, when I talked into Roger, I didn't see anything, I don't know.
On the side, I don't think you, you might wanna put a Parks truck. In the back of your mind too, cause that one's been in several times this year.
Yeah, I never thought about that.
So you, those side.
Very about that.
Okay.
It's a Ford.
Forgot about that.
So that's, yeah, I guess, um, we'll know more for, uh.
That's, that's, thank you for that.
Yeah, right, 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 I, I meant to pull that up too, okay.
How long did that last?
Um. Those little accounts you have, like, there's the dirt and gravel roads, bridge repair funds, developers escrow, what other ones, there's a FEMA FEMA grant. You never budget anything for those. Just kind of knock, I, that's why I didn't really wanna waste a lot of time on those account, or it's, as basically it's, I can show you where you're gonna be at the end of the year. But you don't anticipate, you can't, I, the develop, yeah, you really can't, just so you know, I'm not, that's why I kind of generally skip over those ones. Okay, so, general fund. All the funds, so I know Megan, you had given me. Uh. The assessments most up to date. I, it was, I think you printed it, but.
Isn't that, is that what I just gave you?
Is it?
I think so.
I know, I feel like you printed it and I was like. Okay, oh, good, 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 good.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I just.
Thank you.
So I'll be able to.
Thank you for doing this on a Saturday.
Yeah, you, you don't have to stay. Um. Okay, so I'll be able to plug that number in. That we finally got here, this year, um, the assessed value is a hundred and twenty-nine million and change. So you'll get fourteen mils out of that, and then you kind of have to go with the discounted rate, like what is, two percent, and we have to probably chop off at least ten percent that won't get paid until. So I, um, I now have that number that we can put in here, I put in the budget for what you had last year, um. Danielle, you're a tax collector, sh, I haven't seen her or a check from her in a while, so I think I had a note from, well, it's been since I've been gone, so. That she didn't, hadn't collected much, I think in September, and she was bringing a check and, but I haven't received another check yet, so I'm assuming I'm getting one.
Yeah.
And then I looked at last, uh, like in twenty twenty-four, when, how much money you receive. Between like November, December, around fifty thousand, so I just plugged that in as far as like projected year end, I don't, I, I'm, I'm guessing and I'm hoping it's here sometime soon. Or get the check for that, um. The real estate's prior year, uh. And delinquent, so I need to clean up a little bit more on those, but, uh. I also kept those again in the same budget as what you had for, um, the prior year. Now that I have these figures, I can probably. Take a look at that and adjust if needed, um. Three ten, uh, one hundred, the realty transfer tax, I think that was basically around what we get each month, so. Should be somewhere around sixty-five thousand, you did budget for seventy-five thousand, I just left that alone, I basically left all these alone. The only one I did change, did I change that one, I think. Um, the EIT, non-residence is higher than that, I put that at two eighty, but we can leave that at two sixty-five. Probably just do that for now. Um, so that will be the same.
She says it's gonna be two sixty-five.
I'll leave it at that for your budget, but like you've already, I, you're, you're over, I think you're gonna hit that over, um, by the year end. So. It's usually play it safe and underestimate what you're gonna get as far as your revenues.
Surprise money.
Huh?
Be surprise money.
Yeah, I like, you always want the surprise, um. Okay, so there's LST there, I, I left those things there under the taxes. Um, I will adjust now that I have those figures, uh. Licenses and permits, I think I just left these as far as what you budget every year for, um. Just didn't really see it, I, it looks like we were low on a couple of things, but I don't know. I just leave them as is, um, three thirty fines and. So I think you'll be, right, I just, again, budgeting purposes, um. I guess I took the ordinances, the fines, those, I put those down a little bit from the budget, but just what we took in this year. Um, so, so under three forty, under the ri, interest rents, um. The, if we go down to the interest, three four one one hundred, um, this thirty thousand that's so far. Because I haven't, there's also, there's already forty thousand in there, I have to re- reconcile Septembers and Octobers before that's gonna show that, so it'll actually be higher. By the year ends, so you'll have November and then December, so it'll probably be closer to fifty thousand for this year. Um, I put in seventy-five thousand as your interest for next year. So, um. Rents of land and tower, I left, so we have. Those two numbers and I just kind of pulled those there from what we have coming in. Okay, uh, there's not anything in the FEMA, the three fifty one oh three oh. Uh, next one down, okay, so here you go, this is all those transferring money back and forth, three five four. Um, oh two one, the public safety grant, that seventeen thousand five hundred and forty was the funds that came through for the camera grant. And then we transferred that back to, uh, act thirteen. Um, next, three fifty-five, state shared revenue, um. I don't have anything. This one, uh, this might be that twenty-three hundred Megan, that I'm trying to figure out which it was.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I put sixteen hundred here, but I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and guess that's that twenty-three hundred that came into M and T that will be there. Um, so I'll, I just left these basically what was budgeted for. Pension allotment, I don't know if I had the final MMO here, so I'm gonna highlight that just to, for my notes with that hundred and eighty. That we submitted to the state, just verify that that's what we submitted, that's fine, but I'll highlight that just until I, for my records, I'm. But we did receive the two hundred and nine thousand, I do need to pay that pension. Out, so it's still sitting in our account, um. Of, wow, yeah. Uh, three fifty-five, I know, what is that one, um, three fifty-five nine nine seven. So it was, yeah, that's the fire relief funds, that's a pass through, so I just left that alone at the thirty-two thousand, um. Nah, three fifty-six, so the gamelands, we do get, um, a little bit, uh, well pilot payment move taxes. So that was the twenty-two oh eight that we received and just left that alone there for twenty-two hundred for the following year, um. What do I have here? Um, there was a grant, or not a grant, I'm sorry, another pilot that came in, and I think we actually just received this.
Yeah.
Um, it was with the Pennsylvania housing something, what building do they own that has like apartments, I think, or something, it wasn't like a tree. Um, it was with the Pennsylvania housing something, what building do they own that has like apartments, I think, or something, it wasn't like a tree hub. I forget, but they, they do a pilot, so that money came in under local, I think that had, I, I had to create this line item, so that's why it wasn't in, in the budget last year. I can put that in the next year, that fifteen thousand, because you'll be paying that. I don't know if it's gonna be the same, but I'll just leave it, it may increase slightly, but, yeah. Um, then, three sixty one, general government subdivision land development filing fees, it's kind of projected where you'll end up at the end of the year. Uh, the zoning permits was substantially higher than it, um, what you had budgeted for, so I did increase that to ten thousand versus five thousand. Cause I think you're gonna be around twelve thousand that's coming in for the year, um, why did I, zoning hearing fees, uh. I guess I need to probably make that a thousand, not a hundred, maybe my fingers are not working. Um, three sixty two, public safety, um, obviously that's changing, twelve hundred, um. Just budgeted the same again, uh, it looks like you're gonna fall, I mean, the SRO, I, that's actually gonna be the one twenty six, and I don't know why it was budgeted for one twenty eight. For that, that one there, but.
Oh, uh, I think because of. Jimmy retired, or he is retiring, so we had to backfill some with one of the officers.
Right.
So I think he was compensated a little bit for that.
Okay. Alright, so I'll just leave that there, um, building permits, again, left that there is what your budget was, you're a little bit higher, I guess, um. There's really some sale of scrap metal pieces, yay, um. Uh-oh, I don't know if I'm gonna be, oh, that's fine, I can't change anything anymore, it's not letting me do anything, it's frozen. So I'll make notes if I need to make changes, um. That miscellaneous revenue under three eighty oh ten, that one was, we got a franchise license that came in that was supposed to be to the parks, I donated it in the general fund and had to transfer it back to the parks, so that's all that is. Um, three eighty four reimbursement, you never budget for any of these items, um, obviously the officers are, they do have the BNI, they have the, the seatbelt grant, um. DUI things, but you don't budget for them, kind of pass through, so that's just what we've received to date this year for the BNI, um. So the three ninety one, the proceeds fixed assets, so that, you'll see that big two hundred and thirty eight thousand, that was the insurance claim that came through for your vehicle. Um, obviously you didn't budget for that, um, weren't anticipating that one coming through, but that's why you'll see that number there. Uh, I don't think there's really anything budgeted here. This two ninety nine is kind of a wash, I think, just gotta make sure that this is fine, but. It was just an interfund transfer from like M and T to so forth, um, coming, oop. Alright, so I think. Come on. If we go back up, so I think that will, yeah, alright. Basically, I think that brings in all of the revenues, um, again, for the, the, the three ninety nine, that fund balance forward. I don't even know if I put it on your spreadsheet, but I put in five hundred thousand, basically is like, oh, this is where our account is at the end of the year, which is also not accurate at all. So there's just lots of, you know, I don't know how you wanna do that, but we can leave that there, and Ruth also never like, she, it's always just says zero, I don't. Like it's never applied for, like you put it in the budget, I guess it's like a buffer, but she never, if, unless you really needed it to show, I guess that's why, so it's just there. Um, the four hundred, uh, the legislative bodies, so salary of governing body. I know that, uh, this twelve five, twelve five for last year, there's two, two of the supervisors get a little bit more money next year. So then I, I increased that to fifteen thousand, um, office supplies, I increased that, it was at seventy four hundred last year. I put that up to eight thousand, since things are going up, postage, um, put that up to a thousand, I think. I know you just got more stamps, I think we're getting closer to that, like we should max that out. Um, petty cash, I just put in whatever you had in the past, um. Equipment maintenance and repairs, uh, that was some things that were done in the building, so I left that at the sa- the seven thousand, um. The document management service, yeah, I guess it's going to be at that six thousand one hundred and ninety five would be my guess, but I'll leave that at the eight thousand, um, for the budget. Uh, bank fees, so there is fees, they ended up getting canceled out, but, um, and I guess that's changed. It does show up on the statements, but they, they reimburse us, oh, and I can't do anything, cause I can't.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, what's the document management service?
I'm trying to remember what we use this one for, so I don't know if that was printer, like was that, do you remember, Megan, I was like, oh, I can use that for this.
Um.
And I. Let me see, my. Is this general? Here, um.
It's the, it renews every.
Is it like a company that?
Yeah, it's the.
I know that you talked to, well, they had in the past used it, um, scanning stuff, but there was something else that was.
Are they the guys doing our digital stuff?
It might have been, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, General Code and then Keller. Oh, yeah, we also pay rent out of that. Um. So I left it at the eight thousand, um, what did, looks like something got messed up here. Oh, the office telephone, I put back at sixty five hundred, um, will Talidair be done? Like will the new phones be done by next year?
They'll be done next week.
Or next week, okay, so I just left it as what you would normally, at the sixty five hundred, that's why you'll see the decrease.
Yeah. And it'll be a little bit less because of the ser- the service.
Right.
Reduced.
Right, so I put that there, um, what is this one? I need to look at the internet service one too, to see if something should be put in there, cause it looks like I'm pulling from there and I'll have to see if Ruth is pulling from a different spot, cause there's only two hundred dollars budgeted there. Um, or if that was for that line item, but I can't highlight. And so I didn't have a great spot for the industrial appraisal, I just kind of put that one in here, that four hundred and three fifty, the insurance and bonding. I don't, again, I don't know that the industrial appraisal is, if that's the appropriate line item, but that would be, what was their total, was it seventy five hundred? For this year, something like that. And then. I, yeah, so I basically where I put that here and then.
Four hundred and three fifty.
Yeah, insurance and bonding, I just couldn't find a great location to put that in. So I just wanted to make sure it was accounted for. So if we find a different one that we wanna put that in there, I can change that. And this one, um, so four oh two, the auditing bookkeeping services, this was our lovely Baker Tilly. Um, I mean, if you wanted to put the industrial appraisal maybe somewhere in there, since it kind of is going along with auditing, but I don't know, it's up to you. I left that at the thirty five thousand, and I would hope you can find something better. So. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Uh, four oh three, tax collection, I left that where the budget fell, kinda seems like it was right around there anyway from the year before. Um. Four oh four, legal services, I did increase that, I don't think I, I think like the last bill I paid for John was. July, I don't even think I have August yet, but maybe I do, I just don't, it's gonna be more, so I put fifty thousand for John, um. Special legal services, uh, if you want, I only put fifty dollars, it was, there was six thousand in there before, does that cover your, like, your zoning? Hearing board if you needed a solicitor, I don't really know, but.
Oh, that might have been.
Yeah.
So.
Because when we need the stenographer and stuff.
Alright, okay, so I'll put, I'll put that back in there when I get this saved and reopen. Um, okay, then four oh five, salaries, I have those put in there, and I had a little bit more, I think I included for the treasurer if. And I hope I'm not having to train or be there in January, but just in case, and just a little bit of the overtime, um. Health insurance, and I put that in there, so that is showing at the highest rate, um, and then the HRA, same thing there. Four oh six, um, personal admin, I did increase this, the four oh six, three sixteen, the drug testing, um. Seems like if you have turnover, you're gonna have to have some money in there, so it's just fifteen hundred there. Uh, internet fees, see, I was supposed to pay some internets out of that and I didn't, it's fine, so I put a hundred dollars there. Engineering services, I don't have anything in that. Four oh nine is the, um, municipal building, uh, what was this? Wages, and so I think this is higher here, that four oh nine, one forty, the wages, and that is Barry's, and I think that there is somewhere, there's like land maintenance that she had. And I don't know that it was pulling from that, like you had budgeted money for that, so I, anytime he just, I just put, right, so it just all went into that line item versus there. So I left, well, no, I think I took that one out, so the one that was like the land maintenance, like when he's mowing the yard here, just left it at this one, but, um, it's thirteen five. So I left that there, and I believe I took that out as we get further down looking at those, um, heat, water, gas, I left it the twenty five thousand. Probably is gonna be around there, if you wanna increase that slightly, I know electric's gone up, uh, I don't know, gas seems to be okay, but, um, just kinda left that alone. Then four oh nine, two fifty, the repair, maintenance and supplies, um, this was, we did the lighting, was that, no, what did we do out of this one? That one wasn't the lighting, was it?
The lights.
Was that that thirty two, yeah, because you typically only do like seven thousand for building maintenance? And that, you had like twenty five thousand built in there for the lights out in the parking lot, so that was where this was included. So we can bump this one down, it's, it's back to seven thousand, um, I left it at thirty five thousand, we've talked about doing the shelving, uh, as far as. And I don't know where that'll keep us.
The two fifty was the, that lighting, yeah?
Yeah, um, so that's why I left it at thirty five thousand, that can be changed, I'll just make a note if we need to or want to, or.
For the file storage.
Yeah, that file storage, and I think that, I think like the worst case scenario, I don't remember how much it was, like twenty five, probably somewhere around there, um.
Twenty, twenty three-ish.
Okay, something like that, so I just kinda left that there as far as like maybe that's where it would come out.
Twenty three four.
There you go, okay, so that would put you back to about seven thousand in the building maintenance that you normally have, and then that filing storage. Uh, cleaning services, I don't know if you, we've talked about that, I left the budget at twelve five, um, but maybe that's something that can be changed. Okay, there you go, the land maintenance, four oh nine, three seven one, that five thousand that was budgeted, I s- I did include it, but that was where Barry's wages, some of his wages should have come out of. So I can actually eliminate that, or.
Yeah, and just encompass.
Just go into the wages, the building maintenance, I, the, so I'll zero that one out too, when again, four oh nine. Three seven one. Okay, um. So the four ten, when we get to the police, um, just have the salaries there, uh, that the increases. Um, it does include if, if Roger decides to retire next year, it would cons- like have a budget and a buffer, like, or it's for his buyout and a buffer for your new chief if that happens next year. Um, the salary for your full-time patrolman does go up, so I put that figure in there, um. The four ten, one thirty one, the part-time patrol wages, so these are basically Roger's figures that, when he presented to us the last time, that we left. Overtime, we're, it's at thirty six thousand, they've been doing a lot of different work and some of that will be reimbursed, it was the BNI, like, Megan and I were here one night late. There was like six officers and a whole lot of things going on, so there was a lot of overtime, um, happening there, again, that gets reimbursed, but. Just as a buffer, to be safe, I put forty thousand in for next year, I don't know, I said we would maybe hit forty two thousand. Um, but that BNI, you don't budget for, again, there you see where you're getting reimbursed for those things, as well as the DUI, um. The longevity, so I had that calculated, and then some education funding, just in case Roger and I are going over that, of what would be allocated to for that, so. Hmm, four fifty one, or four ten, one fifty, the part-time, um, the school research officers, that's that one hundred and twenty six thousand there, it's contracted with the school. I think these numbers we basically went over with him, I'm just trying to see if there's anything else that's jumping out at me, what one is this, they increased. I slightly increased the insurance, um, for the officers, since we know we will have a, you know, a three or four percent increase, I think, from Gannon's this year. So I did increase those slightly, um, that four ten, four twenty, the dues and subscriptions, that is the sixty nine hundred that's in the budget for next year, is that software, um. That starts next year, well, it may start next year, so it's just showing there. Um, four eleven, so in four eleven, that's just the fire fund, um, fire relief, that's basically what we got this year, so I just increased that, that's a wash, so it really doesn't matter. Um, just comes in and we send it back out, uh, workman's comp insurance, just left that at the ten thousand there. Hydrate rental, I did increase this, um, it looks like, yeah, I, the Aqua bills have come in, they're around like thirty two hundred a month, so I put that, or increased that to. Um, forty thousand for next year, the hundred thousand is what they requested, um, at the meeting, and so with this year, your contract was for ninety thousand. Um, so I assume you're gonna be, well, it's up to you guys how you wanna handle that one, when we.
Yeah, once we get through.
Okay, okay, um, planning and zoning. Uh, just have the wages in there, I have the health insurance, uh, the clothing allowance. Um, I bud- I kept the same budget for the, which one is that, the zoning expenses and then the vehicle insurance, just kept those, I think. Um, I haven't paid anything out, for four fifteen, the emergency management wages, somebody supposed to get some money? Okay, well, yeah, as budgeted, three hundred, and I left it in for next year. Um, okay, four ten, or four twenty one, health, CDL, I also, animal shelter there, four twenty one, four fifty nine with the animal shelter, I haven't paid anything for that yet. I don't know how that works, I don't remember, feel like they send us a letter, but they are under construction, so if they've really been open to do anything, I don't know. I just pu- left it in as the same thing for next year, but we have not paid that yet. Four twenty six, nothing for recycling, um, four twenty seven, solid waste collection, um, I just left that the same, I didn't have anything this year. Um, hmm, uh, four. Um, hmm, uh, four twenty nine three sixty seven for wastewater, I just increased that slightly. Um, I don't know if the authorities rates are going up or not, but just to be safe. Uh.
That's what we get charged.
Right.
To have an on that subject.
Oh, is that up for the, uh, round top then? What is it for?
It's an assessment on all of us.
Okay, okay.
That are on public sewer.
Okay. So should I leave that as what it was?
I would think so.
Okay. Four twenty nine, we just go back to, not that it was.
I still have the figures I know of it, but.
Okay. Uh, four thirty, so added in the, the salaries. Um, again, I think I told you, not including the superintendent. It was around three hundred and twenty one thousand for salaries that needed to be divvied up between the general and the state or liquid fuels, you do again have some buffer. In Act thirteen, if there's above and beyond for, um, that, and it also gives you around twenty six thousand for overtime. So when we look at. Uh, it's actually, actually gonna be a little bit further down, but, um, the health insurance. Was budgeted for a hundred and thirty thousand last year, with, there's a li- a slight decrease this year. Um, I, it's actually less than that hundred and twenty thousand, but if there's anything unforeseen, I just left it, that's gives you about a ten thousand dollar buffer. Um. Uh, the H R A, the same thing, a little bit different there, uh, vehicle fuel, um. We, that, the diesel fuel, I think you're gonna come in around thirty six thousand by the year end. Might be less than that, you budgeted fifty, I, so I put forty thousand as a budget. Leave that, okay, uh, clothing allowance should stay the same. Nothing really crazy there. Insurance, I did increase slightly, just because with Gannon's coming in and. So highway, four thirty two, the snow removal, so there, um. We just did that at the last meeting, I know, I don't have the exact rate, but it's around forty four thousand that, um, for the anti-skid in the sand. So I put in for your budget for next year at forty five thousand. Okay, um. Four thirty three. Material, street signs, I just left it in as the budget, really wasn't much that came out of that this year. Um, but I don't know if that's just kind of the rainy day fund, I did increase, um. The, which one is that one, four three three two hundred, so that is your, um, electric, and so. I put it nine thousand because it's, it's gonna be higher than your six thousand already.
Yeah, that includes our maintenance agreement.
Yeah, 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 so I put that in there for that. Uh, let's see, four thirty seven, so. Four thirty seven one hundred, this is part of that labor, um, and this is again for the, uh, like mechanic. When they're doing their repairs, so I put in twenty five thousand here, uh, that's that increase from over budget. With what you saw, what she had allocated for the general fund, at the ten thousand, um, there, because we're. You can see we were hitting or exceeding that, almost to twenty thousand for the year end. Um, and. The repairs and supplies, I left that at the ninety thousand, I believe you're gonna come under that, but I also need to check. This number may change, but it's kind of that, if it's, if this is coming out of where the new vehicle that burned up, the bat one, the replacement. I think I put that in this line item, which will come out of this, so it's gonna show you a really huge number that we paid, but there really isn't appropriate line item for. Of major equipment, um, so I will be able to show that if we're paying that before year end. But you also have that line item up front, wouldn't need, um, as far as revenues, um.
Yeah, they got some parts they're waiting on.
Yeah, so I don't have, I haven't paid that out yet, but I'm pretty sure that's where you're gonna see that, so you may see something that's, you know, shows really out of whack, but that's what we. Put that, uh, four three eight, um, with the highway maintenance, the one hundred, um. I increased this a little bit, but that was basically just to make sure we cover potentially any overtime, um, to where it needed to be. So, uh, you're well under that this year, and I'm sure that sixty thousand's very, um. Probably very high for what you will actually come in at by the year end. Um. I think everything else I left. The same, pretty much for there, so if anything needs to be adjusted, let me know. Um, four thirty nine, I don't have anything there, you hadn't budgeted last year, um. Uh, four fifty, culture recreation, uh, contribution to library, so I just cut that check. That's there, so I left that at the seventeen thousand for next year, that's the eighth of a mill that goes to them. Um. Four seventy one. Um, we have not paid this, I don't remember which piece of equipment is, is the backhoe or one or the other, there's one that comes up due in December. Load it, whatever, whichever one it is, so that one I will have the payment in December, so I put the fifty six thousand there.
The backhoe, one second.
Sure.
The, um, contribution to non-government organization, four fifty seven, five forty.
Yeah.
Mm, what is that for?
It was in the budget, nothing's been in, out, in or out of it, I don't know what they've used it in the past, uh, they, looks like it hasn't been used since. Twenty one and a whole twenty four dollars came out of that, I don't really know, so I left that as is. But I don't know what you've, you've actually done with that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Uh.
Twenty four dollars.
Twenty four dollars, yeah, you guys are really generous, I don't know what it would have been for. Um. Ah, okay, so those, the debt, that four seven one, oh two, the debt payment, um. Actually, that twenty two thousand will come down, since you're, that's the other piece of equipment that's there. I'll change those too, just so they're actually whatever it was for, in their thing, um. Debt interest, I guess I left there. Uh, your FICA, I did, with my spreadsheets, I kind of calculated where that should be, um, so I've kept that. That has increased to the hundred and twenty five. Um, U C basically stayed around the same, so I left that at the twelve, um. Four eighty three, so again, I think that was just this last meeting that you had, that we approved the pensions, I haven't paid anything yet, so. That will come out within the next few weeks, um, and then. I think thi- these were the M M L figures, maybe, that we came up with, but I'll verify that in that fourth, four eighty three. I'm pretty sure I got those numbers from Megan's sheet. Okay, uh, workers' comp, increase that slightly, um, I guess if we hear anything from Gannon's. Prior to, if it's gonna go up any more beyond that, but, uh. Yeah, liability insurance, so that shows a big chunk there, again, I wasn't paying out of all the other little insurance funds that I should have, so. It, throughout, you know, like the fire and different departments, that one's why that's wonky, so I just left it. New, with the new treasurer coming in, I'll come up with the formula, so it just kinda comes out of each thing, each pay, or each of the ten. Payments that come out of there, so it would balance, um. Ninety seven. Yeah, I think basically left the other things as they were there, um. Four eighty nine. I left those as they were. Um, I, yeah, again, with the, the actuary services, like I, we haven't paid much yet, so I'm assuming that's coming out within the next few weeks. Um. Uh, real estate, oh, there was a tax refund, but you don't budget for that anyway. Four ninety two, inter-fund transfers, so I guess if we wanna budget for anything, like if it's. If there is a capital reserve project that we know we wanna allocate money towards, or anything else, um, we can do that. But I just didn't put anything for those, so.
Um, Lauren, is there? I can't find the line, um. Four zero nine two thirty, um, heat, light, sewer, water, gas. Do you, are those broken out any further down?
Um, I mean, they all get paid out of that line item, like as far as like, uh, the Valley Energy, um, Aqua, they're all paid out of there, I mean, I can get those. As far as what the breakout is and the electric.
Just, well, like you said, the.
The electric's going up.
Fuel isn't probably gonna change so much.
The electric is though, yeah.
The electric is gonna go way up.
Yeah.
Might be good to understand.
Just to give us a little buff, maybe more of a buffer.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, and what else, oh, like the authorities, but that's pretty nominal and I don't think that's gonna change much.
Yeah.
Um.
Um, do you know off the top of your head what electric was this year, so far?
Um, for this building, oh. It fluctuates, it's close, I wanna say it's around eighteen hundred.
A month.
Yeah, that mean, um, no, a month.
Uh, Lauren, we do need to add the notary, uh, reappointment.
What number was that one?
For zoning.
A four fourteen, it's under four fourteen then?
It, yeah, the under zoning.
Notary? Okay.
Need to, uh, add five ten ninety to that.
Okay. So I do need to make changes before I can really show you where we fall, and then I can adjust like that fund balance forward. Um, and then I, with these, but it kinda gives you a good overview of where we're at and hopefully where we should fall. Right? I can.
S-. So for the board, we need to, we can, we have to have one last meeting that comes to be on the fourth, third of December. To get it balanced out. We actually need to start. Just maybe we can get this balanced and move them on it is.
Well, I can show, I can adjust the fund balance forward too, um, so that will change things and plus I have to add in whatever the taxes are, where that should fall. This year, so those will be a little bit of an adjustment, I could email this out, just leave the spreadsheet, um, send that to you, I'll, I'll take a look.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need to have that, because we'll need to have one, and it has to be before the third of December, so we need to schedule it.
Bonnie, does that?
So finalize it.
Does that have to be a special meeting, because that, you're gonna be making decisions?
No, well, it's gonna be, uh, it would be.
Same as this, or?
It would be the same as this, it would be the, the workshop.
I thought that. I thought the workshops were like just gathering information, but no decision, and then you have to have a meeting to actually decide.
We have the dates and stuff of what we have to comply with here, um. Right now, I'm concerned about getting the next meeting scheduled, so we could balance this out, and then we could get it out to the public for review, that we are, we're, we're at a time limit here, we're quite this.
But that's my point, is.
We may have to, most nearly, I don't know right now, until I can get the whole board to deciding.
And then, and then, and then I can, they can have one or maybe two.
Right.
The last one has, the last one would have to be at a regular meeting or at.
Yes.
A special to, yeah, to confirm.
To make decisions.
To make that decision, to finalize, but yeah.
Because decisions shouldn't be made in a workshop.
True.
Right, they can't be.
That, that's what I was.
Yeah, they can't be.
Yeah.
That's what I was.
Yeah, that could, whether they have three more budgets or workshops before, but that last one, when it's all done, it's said and done, this one.
Right.
Would have to be at a meeting or.
At a meeting or a special meeting.
A special meeting.
But right now, we need to get the, last workshop meeting in. And.
Okay, okay, just to get off her, okay.
Yeah, just so we got an idea for that.
Um, I guess, can you reach out to Tressa and see? When she is, because we really need all of us here for the last final budget meetings.
What's our timeline here, again? I know you sent that out to us, but.
It has to be. The latest that we.
We'll wait.
Another meeting before December.
Right.
The third would be the like, the last day to finalize.
And then you were. We would.
We can do, we have to have, if we get, like this, we have to do it before the third, might. We're doing this today, special meeting, I would have to, that's one of our, I have to support you before.
Seven, four meetings for nineteen.
One, two.
Right, exactly.
After that, then it's the tenth.
Yes, so. That's too, that's too late.
So we would have to do it this, either December one or two. Or what, like?
Maybe we could do.
Like this next week?
Yeah.
It's, yeah, so seventeen things.
And then we would be able to do it after the nineteenth.
And then I got plenty of time to do my. Cause I'm. Anything extra is in December.
So, Matt, Mike.
No. Yep, Monday, Tuesday works for me.
Okay, Matt.
Anytime after spring, this next Monday, Tuesday?
Yeah, seventeenth, thirteenth.
Yeah, in the evening?
So it'd have to be this.
It'd have to Tuesday.
I have to advertise the workshop. But we have previously advertised the workshop in paper.
And there's no paper Monday?
I would prefer Tuesday, possibly. I wouldn't be available to be here till after, till around five, so.
Tuesday at six?
Okay.
I said I just put in for Tuesday at six.
What?
I said I just put in for Tuesday at six.
Yeah. Yeah.